Good evening, everyone. With the time being 6:00 PM on Tuesday, March 28, 2023, I will call this meeting of the Webster School Committee to order and ask that we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just as a reminder, this meeting is being recorded, both video and audio, and will be posted on the district website. The first item on the agenda is to move into executive session according to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. I'll entertain a motion to move into executive session.
So moved.
There's a motion and a second. Lori, would you please pull the committee?
Number Adam Ockers?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. So we are going to move into executive session for a short time and we'll let you know when we're done. Good evening again, everyone. We're back from executive session and the next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from several meetings, February 24 and March 14 meetings, and then also several superintendent search committee meetings. Is there any questions or comments from the committee regarding any of these meeting minutes? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve all of them as presented.
So moved.
There's a motion and a second. Lori, would you please pull the committee?
Number Adam Ockers?
Yeah.
Yes. Yes.
Yes, motion passes. The next item on the agenda is an update from our student representative. Good evening, Vicki.
Hi, everyone. So first, I'm going to start with a sports update and our spring sports tryouts have started and sports are already starting to go. The tryouts were on March 20 for softball, baseball, and outdoor track. Softball actually had a, has a scrimmage for tomorrow and there was also an All-Star game for basketball hosted at Bartlett two Thursdays ago for both the boys and girls team. And then in order of March Madness, National Honor Society has hosted Spirit Days and we do a Spirit Day every Friday of the month of March. And the first Friday was Groun Day, which is basically you wear a gray outfit and it's supposed to be all gray, like grout on the floor. And then Green Day for St. Patrick's Day and then we had ties, tiaras, ties and tutus last Friday and then this coming Friday is Jersey Day.
Lots of good things going on. Thanks for the updates. Any questions or comments for Vicki? No? All right, well, thank you again.
Thank you.
And the next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report. Good evening, Mrs. Prangeli.
Good evening, thank you. And before we start, I just wanted to thank the committee very much for their confidence and support throughout the process and I look forward, I'm very excited to be in a new role and I look forward to our continued partnership and working with all of you as we move forward. So thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is personnel update. So I have a few new hires to announce. We have Caitlin Bergeron, who is a para at Webster Middle School. Anthony Rivera is a para at Webster Middle School and Sherri Malkowski, who is an ELL teacher at Bartlett High School. We've also had a few resignations, all in the cafeteria. It hasn't been a good month for Kelsey. She's a little tired in the morning now. She's been filling in at breakfast in the classroom at Park Ave. We had Janice Mays and Patricia Richards from the breakfast in the classroom resign. And then we had Shannon Pringle, a cafeteria worker at Webster Middle School, resign. I'm also pleased to announce a few transfers that we've had recently. As you know, my assistant Cheryl Spink will be retiring in June. I'm happy to announce Christina Radlow will be transferring from Webster Middle School. She was administrative assistant to be the business office manager. We're very excited to have her in the business office. I know Heidi's a little sad by that, but we're very pleased. Christina has a wonderful work ethic. She is skilled on all of our systems. She's managed the student activity. I don't know if any of you have ever spoken with Christina. She is just a pleasure to work with and to have and she is eager to learn more and to grow in her career here in Webster and we're very excited to have her here in the business office. I'm also pleased to announce that Ms. Ava Landry, who was the Assistant Director of Adult Ed, is moving over to the director position in adult education. She has been filling in all year long for Ms. Goan, who was out on leave and permanently resigned earlier in March. So Ava is, been doing the job, is skilled and we continue to look forward to working with her. So we will be filling her position, her assistant director position that has been posted. Are there any questions about personnel? No? Okay. And other updates? We had our first, last full professional development day on Friday, March 24. I've asked Ms. Chapdeline, our PD, our curriculum and PD director, to come and talk about that. I was very pleased to see the staff, whom all seemed very excited about the professional development they were receiving that day. We walked around the buildings. I don't know if you wanted to talk a little bit what was going on on Friday?
I would love to do that. So I'm really pleased to be sharing information and feedback about that day. Fourth day. It was a good day. Overall, a lot of effort went into planning the day so that teachers could experience content-specific PD relevant to their roles and aligned to the instructional priority for the district. We had a number of staff members who delivered professional development and we had a number of outside partners who joined us for the day and facilitated various sessions across the district. I'd like to give them a quick shout out if I can.
Sure.
Okay, so Tara Jalino worked with our K-2 teachers at Park Ave. Sam Bodat worked with our CPM math teachers, got a little support with Tim Paradise. Dan Zimmer, Keith Goodyear, and Donna Hurtin facilitated the transition planning for the special education staff. Christine DeJardin and Alicia Wisniewski. They facilitated a Wyatt Four and Pearson Assessment Training that was taking place. Michelle Bigelow facilitated a CTE Priorities and Planning Session and Dr. Patty Mackay ran incorporating key language uses into unit and lesson planning. So a lot of internal people were hoping to continue to grow that and have more people have opportunities to present and co-present with peers. Outside partners include Alex Stout of Hill for Literacy, Robbie Chisholm of TNTP, Kate Mazurik and Chris Rodenbaugh of TNTP, Jocelyn Dunick of CPM, Rakina Holloway of Curriculum Associates, Polly Bath of Christia Lesher Associates. Lots of people were excited to get a photo with her. She's sort of a national celebrity. Karen Antonelli of Rebus Associates worked with our paras. Keith Carrato did a CPR certification session with our nurses and Michael Sarassin did our surf safe training with our cafeteria workers. We also had guests. We had the preschool teachers from St. Joseph's School who joined us in the afternoon for the pre-K Polly Bath session. They've been working with Polly Bath all year as well and it was just nice to have that integration across the schools. It was especially nice to invite everyone to join together for the breakfast social in the morning. That took place in the cafeteria. I want to thank Kelsey Sanders and the cafeteria staff who provided us with a wonderful meal and the custodians for helping with the venue. After breakfast, we gathered together to focus on connecting across the district and our instructional priorities. So in an effort to align to that and also align to our gleam work, which you are all very familiar with, we invited Tanya Gallagher of TNTP to deliver our district opening. She also did an overview of science of reading and she delved into a study entitled "The Opportunity Myth." I think this resonated with a lot of us. But I will say, for some of our staff who are really heavily involved in this work, a lot of this for them was like, I know this, which is really great for the district to have staff that are that comfortable and know this hard work. The overarching goal of the opening session was to unify the staff around our instructional priority. But what was especially unifying, and I hope you don't mind me saying so, was when our newly appointed superintendent, Monique Prangeli, got up to welcome staff and was welcomed herself with a standing ovation. That was a wonderful way to start the day, feeling unified as a district. So that was, that was a highlight. And she's very humble, so. After the opening session, staff went to their respective content PD. I would like to share a little bit different if I can have just a few more minutes.
Sure.
I did ask the coaches to share with me some of their thoughts and the middle school and high school coaches told me that at the CPM training, teachers were enthusiastic about receiving hands-on PD from a student lens and watching the flow of a well-structured lesson by an actual CPM consultant. They were very happy to be led through the planning process by one of their coworkers and they received a folder of exciting instructional strategies and materials that they could use. The ELA session that was focused on research-based practices gave teachers opportunities to collaborate with their peers in their own building, but also to have vertical collaboration with middle school and high school teachers, chance to exchange ideas and plan future lessons. They were so thrilled about this. The disciplinary literacy P, which was focused, a PD which was focused on science and social studies, people were running up to us and basically saying, you know, finally, this is something that's so relevant to the work that we do and they just felt like it was something that gave them a chance to work together and practice strategies for their classroom. Social studies, teachers in particular, loved having the student experience with the facilitator that ran that session. Some of our, some of our teachers went back and started employing some of these models right away. At the elementary school, they loved the planning time. They were broken into groups, worked on some companion slides for wonders. You can see there's so many different things going on in so many different specialized areas. Many finished their companion slides for the year. Some went back and, you know, recreated the ones because they're getting so good at it from the beginning of the year. And then we had a K-2 session, vertical alignment session, and also a grade three to five session. So we broke teachers up into more specific grade level teams. It just was a wonderful PD day. You'd have to look to see all the, I mean, I haven't even touched the surface. Our paras had a great training as well that was very focused on English language learners and they had had similar training all year long on special education. So they were really thrilled about their PD. So I don't want, I could go on and on, but I don't want to bore you.
No, it was a really well-thought-out, planned day and thank you for all your work on that, Jill. She put a lot of work into that and I have not heard anything bad about the day at all. All the feedback we've heard was that they were so appreciative to have the specific content and the time in their area of professional development. So thank you so much for that.
Yeah, one group I didn't mention was our Unified Arts and Fine Arts. They had an opportunity to spend the day together and they really enjoyed that. They had two different sessions in the afternoon, one with Polly Bath, which they really enjoyed, and then one at the end of the day where they were looking at a vision for K-12 music art, gym, phys ed, health, something that they really appreciated. So it was a fun day. We really enjoyed walking around and checking in on everyone.
Thank you. Any questions about that?
That sounds great. Thanks for the updates.
Thanks. Just a couple of other items. I just wanted to remind the committee that our next meeting, we will be having our public forum here for our budget, a public hearing. So that will be planned out for next meeting. I've also had a request from the Finance Committee to attend a meeting on April 11. I think that's the date of our next school committee, right? So I told them we had school committee and they said, well, what if we move the meeting up till 5 and you can participate then? So I will likely be participating in the Finance Committee to answer any questions about budget before our school committee meeting on the 11th. And then I've also had a request to attend the Selectment Meeting on Monday, April 10. They will be presenting their budget for the first time. So just showing a unified front that we're all on the same page and answering any questions they might have about the budget. I would be happy to attend then also because it was a truly collaborative process. We worked on it as a group. So we are all in agreement with the budget moving forward. So I will be attending those meetings. And then lastly, I have, under the superintendent report, the Southern Wester County Educational Collaborative Meeting. I went on March 17. During that, they presented their FY '24 budget, which was approved, which included a 5% increase in tuitions, for added district tuitions. Last year, if you remember, they had an 8% increase. So they tried to keep it where they are in the black now, so they're not in the red anymore. They're holding their own. They have increased their tuitions. But across the state, we are still looking at a 14% increase in all of our private tuitions. And we have not heard that they are moving on that number. That's come from OSD who sets the rate. So that is what is built into our budget for next year was a 14% increase in those tuitions. So we should be okay moving forward. We're keeping in, it's always an area we keep an eye on with our tuitions. But I believe we are in good status and you have copies of all of the budget information within your packets from the collaborative. And that's all I have under superintendent's report.
All right. Should we move into the Business Manager Report, Mrs. Prangeli? Do you have a different hat that you want to put on?
Yeah, I know, I'm going to turn it around.
Okay.
I'm going to turn it around. So on March 21, we had our building committee meeting. There was some really good discussion that happened. We had a lot of talk about our module classrooms. I put all the packet information in the folder for you to review. I think it's important to note that our modulators are set to be delivered in June. So they will be set up over the summer. We hope to have them all completely set up, or at least the construction part of it, by August 18, which doesn't give our custodians a lot of time to make sure they're ready and they have furniture and everything is set for the start of school. But it is our intention to start in the modulators for the first day of school. So we're moving along. It's exciting and scary. It's all kind of becoming a reality really quick. We are talking about what we need to move out, what we need to store because the section of the buildings that we'll be starting are the gymnasium and that wing down there with the auditorium. So where can we put any materials that we're keeping? Any uniforms, any sports stuff? So we've been, I've had some communication with the town. Is there any facilities that we can use again? We're looking at potentially using the auditorium at the town hall, but then that would mean voting some other place. Where can that happen? So we're having those conversations to see what we can use. It would be, we would prefer to have a climate-controlled environment for the material versus putting it in pods. Certain things we can put out in pods, but if it's in there for too long, they're not temperature-controlled and it'll cause damage to the equipment and materials. So certain things we can put in the pods, certain things we can't and those are the things we're working through right now. And in the process, we're still having meetings, ongoing meetings to talk about building spaces, what it's going to look like, what a classroom is going to look like, maybe what a nurse's office is going to look like, having additional food service meetings. There's a lot going on in getting our design development stuff in at our 60% mark, mark coming up in April. So it's progressing. It's, it's, it's becoming very real, very quick. Sure, please, ask away.
Ms. Mill.
Do you have a security plan module when the students are in them and when they're not in them?
Yeah, well, there are cameras and we're working on that. There's going to be an admin suite out there also, so administration will be out there and we'll have a covered walkway. There is going to be security cameras out along the building, but we will be working more and more towards procedure and what that's going to look like and where staff are going to be. We're also working out traffic flow patterns and things like that because that will probably be in place for the whole project as traffic coming, coming in, looking at more of a one-way in, one-way out. So we're working with the police department on that and fire department to look at that. So we've had multiple discussions about that and they will be increasing as we get closer and closer to protocols. Make sure. You're welcome. Any other questions about the building? No. Maintenance updates. Everything's been going pretty good. Somebody did bring to our attention that the play, one of the playgrounds at Park Ave had a couple of broken parts. So Mr. Heatherman is reaching out to the company and trying to find them. It's not a safety issue at this point. It's not going to cause anything, but we do need to maintain and keep those up. And then for the longest time, our IT closet air conditioning was not working and that's finally fixed and up and running. So I think the guy behind the closed doors back there will be pretty happy. It won't be 100 degrees in there and it's better for the maintenance of our equipment. But there's nothing else going on there. We are in good shape maintenance-wise. And then in other updates, I just wanted to let you know we are still working through doing lunch on half-days. It was noted that because it counts as one of our 180 school days that we need to serve lunch because we're a CEP district. So we're doing that. The model looks different at every building as we go through and serve our lunches. One of the areas of concern for me is we always want increased participation. Although it's new, we did have pretty good participation at Park Ave. We served about 300 lunches on the half-day. I mean, we serve over 600 on a normal school day. So we're serving about half. Because they don't have to eat, we just have to offer. So if they want it, they can take it. At the middle school, we served 255 lunches on half-day, which is pretty good actually, considering the number of kids. We usually serve about 400, I'd say four to 500 lunches there. So they're doing a great job. And at the high school, we only served about 30 lunches on a half a day. So we definitely want to see that participation increase. You know, that's typical for a high school kid on a half-day. They might want to go to run to Dunkin's or something and have that break versus a school lunch. So I don't know if Victoria can maybe give us any options or ideas how to increase participation on a half-day? Any feedback you have would be awesome as we move forward because we would like to see that number increase a little bit. Are there any questions about that? No. I do have one more little thing to say about the person sitting next to me. I did receive an email from one of our teachers over at Park Ave that Victoria was receiving her Good Citizens pin and certificate from Ms. Helen Poria, the Regent of the General Ebenezer Learned Chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution. Phew, that was a lot. General Ebenezer Learned Chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution. So she was in the winner of the Good Citizens Essay Contest at Bartlett. She competed with seven seniors from other schools and although you didn't make the state final, they were very impressed by Victoria and wanted her to be recognized and honored for her achievement. So well done, Victoria. You continue, continue to be a great representation at Bartlett. So thank you so much for all your hard work. And that concludes my report.
Well, congratulations, Vicki. And thank you for your report, Mrs. Prangeli.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments from the committee? No, hearing none. The next item on the agenda is the principal report. Good evening, Ms. Peterson.
Good evening, everybody. So I have a couple of things I want to review. We've had a lot of events going on at the middle school in the last month. We continue to work on our PBIS strategies with students and so we held our event in March on the 16th where students used their Wildcat tickets to purchase entrance into after-school event, which they got to choose different locations. They could go to the cafeteria where there was music, the gym where they were playing basketball this time, or the library where there was a movie and games. So that continues to be a highlight for students. The high school, the senior class, or actually, was it the seniors? Yes, the senior class hosted a dance for our students at the high school. So the kids were excited about going to the high school to a dance. So the fifth and sixth graders last Thursday, when I walked them over after school until about 4:30 and then the seventh and eighth graders had their dance from 5 to 7. So it was a big hit, I think, and they are looking forward to coming back, Mr. Collins. The NJHS held a food drive a couple Saturdays ago and we're very successful with that and their food is donated to a location in Southbridge for local people who are in need of food. Grade eight has been, again, working with the high school. They went over to the high school last week to talk to the counselors about scheduling and what high school schedules look like and their choices and options. And so this week, the counselors are actually in our eighth-grade hall with tables, calling out students to set up their schedules so they'll be ready to go in this fall. And then most recently, our Project 351 representative has been collecting children's clothing for Cradles to Crayons, which is the project that Project 351 works in correlation with. So we've had a good collection of that. We've also been very busy with some assemblies. Our eighth-grade health students participated in Pathways for Change. So a speaker came to talk to the eighth-grade students two days about healthy relationships and what a healthy relationship looks like and feels like. And then we also had our seventh and eighth graders have an assembly about mental health. So we've been working with a grad assistant from the Women's Leadership Department at Nichols College and a, an organization called Mental Health Declassified. And so they did an overall presentation with the seventh and eighth graders, brought current students from Nichols in who talked about what mental health means to them and how it has impacted their lives and what they do to promote positive mental health. And so they're actually going to be coming back next week and we'll be setting up stations where the students will be working on different activities in regards to mental health. And so a couple of the activities they'll be doing is something with beads. I'm not quite sure, but I think it's, I can't remember what she said, mental health beads or something like that. Jars, calming jars, and some other games. So we, journaling, so the, we're excited to have them back and see what they, what they're doing. It's just another, even though that's part of our curriculum and the kids hear it every morning with our mindfulness and in the curriculum with health and their guidance classes, I think it really was important for them and is important for the students to hear from kids, basically college kids, from closer to their own age and looking forward to what college might be like as well. So just another avenue for them to hear how important mental health is in keeping yourself grounded. We've also had a couple of field trips already. So grades five and eight went to Old Sturbridge Village at the beginning of March, sponsored by a grant from Webster Five, so it's completely free to us with the exception of the buses. Grade five did a structured program around abolition during the 19th century, so it lines up with our curriculum. And grade eight participated in a town meeting and a debate after they toured the grounds with specific questions which focus on our eighth-grade civic standards. So they, from all accounts, they did a fabulous job and did a great job debating and standing up and did a great job debating and standing up and telling their sides of what they heard from the townspeople at Old Sturbridge Village. Today, we had fifth and sixth grade go to an opera at Woodstock Academy and they watched the Magic Flute performed. The program actually came a couple weeks ago to do a pre-program to get the kids ready for what they could expect. So that was good and they loved it. They loved the opera. So now I'm going around singing an opera to them, which they don't like. So from Desi, as Ms. Palafico reported a couple weeks ago, we have also been in receipt of some student achievement awards from the Department of Education. We had five of our special education students who received recognition for meeting academic progress from the Department of Education. Questions?
Thank you for your updates, Ms. Peterson. Any questions or comments from the committee?
To the chair.
Ms. Millet?
I'm curious about phones. So are you still blocking phones? And do you have any data or any information about how that's gone and if it's been positive or negative?
So we are still using the yonder pouches for the phones. And, you know, like anything that we implement, you get pushback at first, but then as it becomes part of the daily expectations, it is not a problem. We hardly have anybody who doesn't follow the expectations. And when we do, parents are cooperative in coming to retrieve the phones. So we will be continuing with that next year. Actually, I just got an email yesterday from the company asking if we wanted to, how many pouches we need for next year. So we will be continuing with that. Unfortunately, I'm sorry, you asked about data. We don't really keep, like, who's using it or not. The data's really in the form of when admin has to get involved in taking phones if kids are not doing what they're supposed to be doing. So I would say we've probably had two or three a month that we deal with.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson. Any other questions or comments from the committee? Hearing none. There's nothing under old business. So the next item on the agenda is going to be under new business. It's the approval of the business manager job description. Ms. Prangeli?
Thank you, Matt. So I'm looking to have the job description approved for the business manager so we could post that position immediately. The only thing that was updated was the template. Everything else is good.
Thank you, Mrs. Prangeli. Any questions or comments from the committee regarding the business manager job description for the posting?
I just have a clarifying question. And I don't know if it matters at all, but is there a difference between business manager and assistant superintendent finance?
So it was the certification. You could have a business manager certification and not be licensed to be an assistant superintendent, superintendent. So that's why. That's the clarifying.
So it'll be business manager?
Yep, because at a minimum, you have to have the business manager. So it'll be starting out as a business manager. But it could lead to something down the road. Thank you.
Great question. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the job description as presented.
So moved.
There's a motion and a second. Lori, would you please pull the committee?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion passes. And, you know, this feels like a good opportunity just to interject and thank the search committee. You know, our work is done and, you know, there was a lot of work that was done on the part of those who participated in the search committee, some of whom are here this evening, and also many other community members and parents and folks from the buildings. So we never really got back together, you know. So just want to reiterate my thanks to everybody for the time that they committed through the process of selecting our superintendent. And with that being said, the next item on the agenda, also under new business, is the approval of the Webster Educators Association Memorandum of Agreement regarding the BHS scheduling.
Right, thank you. So we are looking to change, have a pilot year for a new schedule at the high school. I don't know if you wanted to give a high-level overview of the schedule, Mr. Collins?
Yeah. So it is our hope to move Bartlett High School onto a four-by-four block schedule that will operate with some hybrid day courses, which will meet every other day all year, such as our AP Advanced Placement courses and our arts courses, and then, of course, some of our pathway courses under Project Lead the Way or Chapter 74. Our core classes will operate on both semester base and we will have built-in remedial courses for students who may enter high school or already be in high school who are struggling a little bit around standards associated with English, math, and science. And we will have built-in times for those. The schedule will operate four classes in one semester, August, excuse me, September this coming year, to January, mid-January, around the 20th of the month. And then picking up Semester Two from January mid to the last day of school in June. This will allow students an opportunity to take eight classes versus seven. So if you look at the end of four years, it gives them many opportunities to earn the 120 credits versus the seven that they would get now, which would be 35 credits a year. So it allows students an opportunity, excuse me, it allows students an opportunity to gain more opportunity at courses. I think the most important takeaway of this, that it allows an equitable access to high-level, quality instruction and time on learning with our certified, qualified, committed staff. But it meets the needs of both extension-level students who are college-bound, but it also meets our students who are looking for career-based opportunities post-high school as well. It will allow us to, of course, meet the needs of the core academic requirements in front of us through Mass Core, but also to tie in the well-rounded experience of the arts, health, and PE and our newly welcomed PLTW Innovation Pathways as well.
Mr. Collins, it looks like a lot of thought went into this schedule. I can see longer periods. Can you tell us, just recently, we unpacked some data related to I-ready and student achievement and stuff like that. Can you tell us a little bit about how this schedule is going to impact that data, hopefully?
Yeah, so as I, as you heard me give one of the brief examples there about our students who are in need of a perhaps remedial course to kind of fill those gaps. We have students who are coming in below mastery level of what we might need them to be at to be successful on an MCAS in biology and math or in ELA. The current I-ready data that we presented here several weeks back now, we have a population, a large number of students who are about two years below growth of where they should be. So if you take in consideration those students in a biology class, for example, we would look at those students coming in, you know, with the literacy level in mind. And then also in an English class, we would look at semesters of a remedial course, maybe an Intro to Biology or an Intro to Algebra I or a Literacy Skills course before we take English II, right before an MCAS. It would allow us to schedule students that are in need of that support into a course before the actual course that will allow the teacher the time to remediate some of those gaps and those areas that students need to get brushed up, so to speak, before we sit for an MCAS. If I may, take the liberty to say, also, on the other hand of that, it will allow our extension-level students who are coming in on grade level or above to have platform to other opportunities such as advanced-level courses through College Board and the Advanced Placement Program, a hopeful student connection with Quinn-Sig, but also the current connection with Nichols Leadership Academy, and then also our online platform that we have here, access to here in Webster as well. So it will give students many opportunities. And then, I'm very proud to say that this will also allow time for students to go out into the community in our internship program that's being developed as part of our Innovation Pathways to gain that experience and that hands-on, job-related experience as well.
Great, thank you. Any questions or comments from the committee?
Chair?
Mr. Collins, I just want to say that I love this approach. I love the fact that it is so time-on-learning focused. I know we've spoken about there is not enough time in each period to really dig in and unpack, you know, all of the curriculum that needs to be taught in that one short time. So I do love this. I love the four and four. I know it's, you know, it's changed, so it's going to come with a little bit of pushback, but I think it's great. We'll hold the students to a higher standard. Thank you. Thank you to you and your team.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Well, once again, I think certainly having this more time on learning is, I'm looking forward to seeing what the results will look like. And hats off to everybody trying something new and stepping out of the comfort zone a little bit. I know it's going to be an interesting year next year with the building and the modulators and a new schedule, but you all are rising to the challenge, so.
We have great supports here at the district level, so I'm sure that with their support, continual support, we will make it happen.
Great, yeah, looking forward to it. So if there's no other questions or comments from the committee, I'll entertain a motion to approve this memorandum of agreement.
So moved.
There's a motion and a second. Lori, would you please pull the committee?
Yes.
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 Yeah.
Yes, motion passes. Great job on that. And the next item on the agenda is the review, transfer signing of warrants, bills, payroll, and vouchers.
I've got, yeah, you can sign there, Nick. Yep, they signed in the wrong spot, so you can sign it.
While we continue signing, I will entertain a motion to move into executive session according to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, to discuss contract negotiations with non-union personnel. We will reconvene in open session.
So moved.
There's a motion and a second. Lori, would you please pull the committee?
Yes.
Yes.
Member Black?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, well, we're back from our executive session once again. And the final item on the agenda is the approval of the superintendent contract. So before, you know, we entertain a motion there, I just want to thank Mrs. Prangeli for your collaborative efforts at arriving at a contract that I feel is in the best interest of not only the district, but for you as well.
Thank you. It was a pleasure working with you and I look forward to being here for a very long time, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Same here. Are there any questions or comments from the committee regarding the contract? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the contract as presented.
So moved.
There's a motion and a second. Lori, would you please pull the committee?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion passes. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
There's a motion and a second. Lori, would you please pull the committee?
Yes.
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 Yes, meeting adjourned. Good night, everyone.